I'm going to call to order the seven o'clock regular meeting of the Iredell County Board of Commissioners for Tuesday, December 3rd, 2019. At this time, I would ask everyone to please bow your head in a moment of silent prayer with the collective goodwill and protection of our people. If you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
Our pledge of allegiance is by our life, to the United States of America and to the Republic for which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to welcome everyone here this evening, so we started a little late. We had some meetings between our pre-agenda meeting and our meeting at seven this evening concerning our strategic objectives for the next year. At this time, I would ask if there are any adjustments to the agenda, and Ms. Jones, could you?
There are no adjustments to the agenda this evening.
No adjustments? Is there a motion to approve the agenda?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Let's pose lights on. Motion carries unanimously. For the record, Commissioner Haupt is appearing remotely. He is in a remote, secure location. So, the voice you hear but do not see is that of Commissioner Haupt, who is appearing. We have no presentations or recognitions this evening. We have an item six, an appointment before the board, which is a presentation by the Statesville Regional Airport Director, John Ferguson, on a $2 million grant for the North Carolina Department of Transportation, Division of Aviation, for taxiway lighting.
Thank you. A pleasure to be here again. I know sometimes the only reason I come here is to ask for money, but this is a good thing. If you recall, back in May, when I had briefed y'all earlier, we received three grants, one from the FAA and two from the state NCDOT aviation. The FAA grant was 9.3 million for an extended safety area off the west end of the runway. That is a 100% grant from the FAA. The second, the next grant from the NCDOT was a $4,112,600 grant to construct a parking apron for aircraft for Victory Air, and that is also a 100% grant. And then the third grant is the one that I'm here for tonight, and it is a $2 million grant to put the taxiway lighting, new regulators for the electrical lighting, and a vault building to put the regulators in. This is going to go on the new taxiway that we just completed. It was a 10.6 million dollar project for this new taxiway, and it also was a 100% grant. So, seemed to be doing very well, got a lot of investment in Iredell County and in Statesville, and things are going very well. The $2 million grant for the lighting is a 90% grant. It means that the 200,000 would have to come from local sources, and last night, the Statesville City Council approved the engineering fees and things for this grant and to spend the 100,000 for their share. So, I'm here just to ask for the other 5% share for this project.
Okay. We would need a budget amendment on this.
There are, there are funds in the economic development budget. It's not specifically allocated for this, but there would not, a budget amendment would not be required because we do have some funds that we could align for this project if the board sees fit.
I think, understanding how much in our economic development budget remains would be helpful for us to make decision on not just this grant, but ultimately other grants. But this is a great deal for the county and for the city. I tend to think we ought to consider this next meeting after we've gotten a little more analysis on the budget piece.
Yes, and we can get the accounting of that, and like I said, since this was not a specific budget request item, we can get to the accounting of that, of that budget.
If I could, just from a, from a taxpayer's perspective, okay, is, you said, we got a $9.3 million grant, got a $4 million grant, and now we're going after a $2 million grant. So, that's $15 million that somebody, federal government, which we fund, and the state government, which we fund, and now our accounting monies, what we fund. We spent $15 million additional dollars on the airport. What did we get for our $15 million?
Well...
I mean, I don't want to hear about how many, how much wattage for lights and all that stuff.
Yeah.
Just from an economic standpoint, how did that, how did spending $15 million at the airport benefit the citizens of Iredell County?
If you put it in perspective of the whole citizens, that would be kind of hard to pin down, other than...
Now you understand the situation.
Yeah, I totally understand. I'm a citizen also. But the, the 9.3 million for the safety area, this is going to allow Victory Air and Champion Air, the two companies that haul the pit crews to the races. There's 13 of those 50 passenger jets, so 650 people every Thursday during NASCAR season flies out to the, to the races. This will allow us to, for them to use a longer portion of the runway, which means they will be able to totally top off their airplanes with fuel. Right now, they have a fuel penalty because of the runway length, and so this safety area will allow them to totally top off fuel. It's more revenue for the airport, and it also helps Victory Air and Champion because they don't have to buy fuel at retail halfway to California, which is what they have to do now.
So, that's part of the economic goody basket to keep NASCAR low.
And, and the, the 4.1 million for the apron is for Victory Air to park them from the south end. They've told us many times that if they had more room, they could buy two or three more jets. And so, moving them to the east side of the airport instead of the south side will allow them, ability to expand, add more airplanes, which means they can haul more teams to races. And then, the, the $2 million for the lighting, it's just, it's a safety issue for the lighting in the taxiway. It was supposed to be part of the 10.6 million dollar project for the taxiway project, but no lighting contractors bid on it at that time. They were so busy, they couldn't even bid on it. So, we had to put this out as a separate bid. But, we have about 105 airplanes based on the airport. We have about 100, I think it's 115 million dollars value of airplanes on the airport, taxable airplanes, about another 16 million dollars in hangars and buildings. So, from what I can remember from the economic development study, the airport itself has an economic impact of 134 million dollars to Iredell County. Of that, if you can do the math, I think the county receives a little over $800,000 in taxes off the airport. The city receives about 700,000 in taxes off the airport.
Is that tax value or tack?
That's tax value.
But, we don't, is this tax value, we're, we're having to rebate 80% or? No, that's, that's really clear.
The personal property tax, which is on the aircraft, is 100%. Of course, you know, those are depreciable assets.
Certainly.
The hangars are owned by the city of Statesville and are not taxed by the county.
Lowe's still gets taxed. That's about a seven and a half million dollar hangar. It still gets, they still pay tax.
The Statesville Regional Airport is actually one of the busier regional airports in the state. And, the, the, the safety issue or the extension of the runway, they don't have to extend the runway. It was actually extended several years ago, before an additional safety rule came into effect that lopped off 1,000 feet of runway, usable runway space. So, this just puts basically fill dirt out there, extended beyond the end of the existing airport, airfield rather, so that you can use the full runway. And whether, you know, NASCAR continues to grow, or whether other customers come in, the ability to be able to fly cross-country without stopping off in St. Louis or Kansas City to refuel is a huge economic benefit, and it will attract more users to the airport. So, it's...
Not sharpshooting your project, but, you know, anytime somebody comes and says, "I'd like $100,000," and we go, "Yeah, here's a check." Man, I got a lot of school people in here. They go, "Wow, we ought to do that." So, um, so, you know, and I think it's important for people to understand what value that they're getting, especially for these, these, these big projects. So, you'd mentioned that there were these three grants. Between now and the end of this fiscal year, are there any more, are you going to come see us again?
Well, every year, we get a, what they call a non-primary entitlement grant, which is $150,000. All airports in North Carolina get that, and that is also 90%. So, it means $8,600 for the city and $8,600 for the county. That's pretty much every year. We're always applying for grants. We're always looking for anything that we can do to expand and improve the airport. So, there...
I would encourage you to share that activity with our county manager and our, our finance director, because, hooray, hooray, you get a grant. At some point, you know, we, we're dealing with a fixed checkbook. So, the fact that you're applying for grants, if, if, if in there, in order for you to receive it, we're on the hook for some money, we need to know that when you're making the application, because we are rapidly approaching a point in time where we're going to say for, whether it's matching grants, because the state NCDOT, the way they prioritize road building projects, it used to be, well, it used to be all political. Now, it's a very structured Excel, we live in an Excel spreadsheet world where you plug in numbers, and then it adds them up, and then somebody can hit sort, and then nobody can say that they were responsible for the decision, because that's the way the, the computer told us to spend the money. Is, at, at some point, as this desire for the, by the state for local governments to partially fund road projects, five years ago or 10 years ago, that accounted for zero of our budget, and we're rapidly looking at, this thing could, could hit millions in very, very short order. So, I would say, that means that probably, even if we budget and allocate money for it, it won't be enough to go around, and, and the municipalities are going to probably have to decide which grants that they can provide the matches for, or, and which road projects that they can fund if, if they, if they commit to the money. So, again, if, if you were up here with a grant for a park and not the airport, we'd, I'd still be saying these things.
That's perfectly fair.
So, it has nothing to do with you.
Sure.
It has nothing to do with the airport, but I'm just stating for the record that, this is getting to be a, a big number, and it's pretty difficult for us to say yes every time somebody, anytime somebody comes with a really good idea, very soon we're going to be, it's got to be the best of good ideas.
Mr. Ferguson, do you control fuel sales now at the airport?
Yes, yes.
I've got one quick question. I need you to school me a little bit here. Definition of a regional jet. I've always understood that it's either half-full of passengers and full of gas, or half-full of gas and full of passengers. That meets the definition of regional. But, from what you're saying today, it sounds like you can fill it up with people, and you can fill it up with fuel, and go a lot further distance. Do you know what the revenues from fuel generate?
Off the top of my head, I'm going to say, we get a fuel flowage fee off of the, the, what we call the private fuelers. A lot of the tenants on the airport, the NASCAR guys, have their own fuel farms, and we get a fuel flowage fee off of that. That's in the neighborhood, I believe, of around $120,000 a year. Since February, when the city purchased the fixed-based operation, now we control all the fuel sales for the general public, and we're looking at, hopefully, if they have a good year, selling about 360,000 gallons of fuel. I predict that's going to bring in probably about a million five for the city.
In that, but, am I correct in saying that a regional jet, it either goes one way or the other, because you had said it goes both ways?
Well, in, in, in my world, a regional jet was always a jet that carried a lot of passengers, but at short distances.
Right.
Whereas, the, the major airlines always wanted to fly Charlotte to Los Angeles, but the, the planes that wanted to go from, from Charlotte to Wilmington was the shorter, smaller. Victory Air and Champion have these 50-passenger jets, and they, they're very fuel-efficient, and that's the reason why they like them. But, you're right, they are going out 100% capacity with 90% fuel, because they can't take it all. But, they are, they're going out at 100% capacity every time.
Correct.
And it's a, and it's getting busier, because it just seems like a lot of the teams, a lot of the drivers are, are getting rid of their private jets, and they're loading up on, on Victory Air and Champion. It's more cost-effective.
I'm just thinking, in the future, you know, what can we expect from fuel? And it's not reasonable to expect something that is unreasonable.
No, yeah.
Thank you, sir.
Sure.
And one of the things, if I may, guys, I'm the airport representative for the board. What I want to point out, I agree with everything that's been said, but keep in mind, guys, Bobby Walston, the director of NCDOT Aviation, our federal partners, Rachel Bingham, our program manager, these are, these are state and federal tax dollars coming back home, just like my trip here in Washington. You know, we're advocating for, with our state and federal representatives all the time, to try to get those, those revenues back home. And, and we, as a board, and the previous boards, have allocated, you know, economic development money towards, for some of these grant funds. Our goal is with, you know, like Victory Air, for example, being able to do a different apron parking with that 100% grant. If they can bring in more airplanes, that'll bring in tax revenue, you know, from the airplanes, you know, and I, if I'm not mistaken, one of those airplanes is equal to, I think, 100, 150 or $100,000 homes, so, that don't have kids in it that we got to put in schools. So, just like, you know, the school system's just got, you know, 12 or 13 million dollar grant for well-being funding. So, if we can bring back some of those state and federal tax dollars back home, otherwise they would go to some other county. So, I totally agree with what you're saying. Ken's right, we have to budget it and plan for it, and we'll do a better job of making sure where possible, but in the last year or two, and John, correct me if I'm wrong, Rachel and those guys have come up with grant funding that we did not know was available. So, it was hard to put it on the forecast as part of our strategic planning for the budget, but those funds come available, we had to apply for, in pretty quick manner, some of our projects, we didn't think we would get to as far as the airport commission. So, some of those things pop up, which is, I think, a good thing, but I agree with you. We'll, we'll put everything on the radar as fast as possible, and try to make sure we keep everybody abreast of what we know is coming. But, I just wanted to remind everybody that, you know, this grant funding could go to some other county, and if these race teams or these people take these airplanes to Concord or some other airport because they have a longer safety runway, or can fuel up 100% to go on a longer trip, we're going to lose that tax base there. So, just keep that in mind too, but I agree with everything that's been said.
Mr. Ferguson, we appreciate your presentation this evening, and the aggressive posture that everyone's taken towards securing these grants, because they do result in on-the-ground improvements to a asset, in terms of the airport, that is an Iredell County asset, not just a Statesville asset. And it's important, as companies, larger companies move in to the county, wherever they may be, the southern end, the Statesville area, invariably, they have multiple plants, sometimes throughout the world, certainly throughout the United States. They're frequently flying in and out to, you know, their C, their, their C-suite folks and everybody else trying to visit, and having this as a viable option for basing or just the fly-ins and fly-outs is an important economic development factor, to be able to lay out in front of, by our economic developers. So, appreciate the work that you all have done, and we're, we're looking, obviously, with the state, to develop a transportation plan for the county that will make it easier to access the airport from the southern end of the county, so, so that we have an integrated transportation plan, and as all these things are working together.
Okay. At the, at the next meeting...
To Mr., to Mr. Robertson's point, we have a finite economic development budget, and so, we also have to apportion that equitably between the municipalities involved. And so, knowing as soon as we can, when we go through our budget-making process, and we understand that there's a certain number of things that just come up, that we want to take advantage of, but, you know, if we spend the money on one, we can't spend it on another.
Right.
And so, the earlier and the more detailed you can be as far as what's on the horizon, if it's two to three years out, that's helpful.
Sure.
If you can plan.
We're just now...
So, we'll have this matter formally voted on, we'll say, two weeks from now.
And I'll, I'll be sure to bring a couple of slides to show what we're, what we're talking about.
Okay. Good.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ferguson. Okay, now, we'll move, now move on to, I'll tell you what, I'd like to move on to item 8.2 on the administrative matters. This is a presentation that is a rollover from our consent agenda by the Emergency Management Fire Services. Mr. Kent Green is going to share a little bit about the radio purchase and the, to support our volunteer fire services, and the rationale behind that, a little bit of context.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just as some background, as what we discussed at the pre-agenda meeting, a little over a year ago, Iredell County applied for an assistance to firefighters grant in the amount of $2.3 million. 300,000 of that was local match, which we budgeted for this current fiscal year. We were notified a couple of weeks ago that we did not receive that grant. That grant would have purchased hundreds of portable radios and mobile radios for the volunteer fire departments across Iredell County. In working with Motorola Solutions to determine the costs and what we could get for the amount of monies that we had first requested through the grant, and then, secondarily, what we could get for the 300,000 we had budgeted this year, they submitted a proposal for a 59-month lease, which would use our existing $300,000 as a, as a down payment, and then over the next five years, purchase 463 mobiles and, I'm sorry, excuse me, 463 portable handheld radios and 130 mobile radios for the apparatus. This would put an 800 megahertz radio in the hand of every volunteer firefighter and every fire apparatus in Iredell County, with the exception of Mooresville and Statesville, and would allow us to follow the board's direction in moving towards the Viper system countywide for the volunteer fire departments. What we're requesting tonight is authorization to move forward based on, or contingent upon working out some final details with the lease agreement, and if approved, authorize the county manager to sign that lease agreement so that we can make the purchase. We're saving $387,000 if we sign the lease agreement prior to December 30th, and the radios would be shipped prior to December 20th. Of course, this is a sales year deadline, and that's part of the reason for the promotion and the, the discount that we are receiving. Question from earlier on warranty. I did check with the vendor, it is a three-year warranty, parts and labor, and much like anything else we purchase, we would love to have a warranty throughout the period for which we're paying for those radios, but technology is what it is. We will break some, we will damage some and lose some, and we've accounted for that within our budgets as well for repairs on that equipment, should the need arise.
Would it be fair to say this, this is sort of the culminating event?
It is.
Of a long process over the last four years of upgrading communications across the board, from dispatch to towers, to end-users with radios and the right frequencies, and all of that, computer-aided dispatch and such?
Absolutely. The counties put a tremendous amount of money into communicating... The counties put a tremendous amount of money into communications in an attempt to improve the service that the citizens are receiving across the county, not any particular area in general. But the sheriff's office moved to the Viper system, the 800 statewide system, about a year ago, I believe. EMS was in that same vicinity. Pardon me. We bought at the board's direction about 160 800-megahertz portable handheld radios for the fire departments, distributed those out to get that technology in their hands. We currently operate on five different radio systems. This will reduce us by one, which will remain as a backup and a system to page over, but eventually, as the technology improves, hopefully, the 800-megahertz technology will be the technology of the future for all of emergency services within Iredell County.
Any additional questions for Mr. Green?
Beth, can you, before we sign this lease, can you look at the option of either negotiating an extended warranty that covers this equipment through the life of the lease? Or should we consider a shorter lease period for three years and then re-sign a different lease for new equipment and upgraded equipment? Or we're gonna have to budget a replacement and repair plan or reduced rate with those guys? But will you look at those different options and let us know what those look like? Because if we don't, if we have a three-year warranty and our 59-month lease, somebody's gotta pick up the gap, that's when they're gonna get dropped, broken, lost, damaged. So, we need to make sure we've got a repair and replacement plan or see if they will negotiate a, instead of three-year, a 59-month situation, since that's the life of the lease.
We do have a repair and replacement plan, where we are setting aside some funds for that, for, you know, breakage and things of that nature, but we can certainly go back and look and see if there's an option for an extended warranty. We can check with the vendor.
Absolutely, and-
Check with them and see if that's an option, or, you know, negotiate with them and see what the potential with Lisa, what is our pro and con of doing a three-year lease instead of a 59-month lease if they won't extend their warranty? Because, you know, with technology, at the end of three years, is it gonna be time to potentially upgrade some of this stuff anyway? So, will you look at those options before we sign anything?
Absolutely. I won't speak for Ms. Jones, but in the original proposal, it was presented both ways, with a five-year lease for 59 months and a 36-month option, I believe. That was not included in the packet because we opted to request the five-year or 59-month option.
And for the record, Kent, that does put a radio in every fireman's hand and every apparatus in the county for volunteer fire departments, correct?
That's correct, yes, sir.
Okay, thank you for your work on that.
All right, well, if we don't have the numbers for a three-year lease, or we don't have the numbers for an extended warranty to cover 59 months.
If it's not time-sensitive, can we table it until the 17th and let her get that information to us?
Well, that's what I was getting ready to say.
If we don't have a signed lease agreement prior to December 13th, then we will lose the $387,000 in discounts with this promotion.
And I will say, we do have a price for the three-year. The reason we opted to go with the five-year is because we had in our budget $300,000, which was the match for the grant, and so, because we already had that built into our budget, hoping and praying we were gonna get this grant, which we did not receive, we opted for the five-year, which the annual payment was what we had already budgeted, that 300,000, and we anticipated trying to keep that as level as possible, which would be a five-year for the 300-a-year.
Right, we're actually budgeting 500,000 over the next five years in the countywide fire service district. The payment, if I remember right, was 437,000 over the 59 months. So, I still think we'll be under that $500,000 projected budget amount.
I just wanted us to be cognizant of that, because you know these guys at fire scenes and rescue scenes, they're gonna be pretty rough on these, on this technology, and, you know, they're gonna have heartache and complaints back to us if we put in a lease or an agreement when we issue them out. If they're responsible, if they tear them up, you know, in the nature of that job, we just have to try to do what's right and have it covered one way or another. So, you guys look at it, I'm good either way. I'll defer with you guys, but I just wanted us to have a plan both ways.
Is there the potential to extend that lease, I mean, extend the warranty period?
That's one of the things that-
Or purchase an extended warranty?
That is one of the things that we will look into after we're done here.
Well-
And they're not gonna give you three years of free warranty.
Two years.
About two years.
You also have the option built in, that option to purchase can be exercised before the five years is up. So, if you wanted to purchase at the three years, you can do that. And so, I did not see the three-year lease, I'm assuming, though, that the payments would've been larger-
They were.
-than what you have now. But you can exercise the option earlier than the five years if you need to.
And just some perspective, the 166 radios we bought a little over two years ago, we've only had three of those damaged in the past two years.
And maybe, maybe an alternative option may be, guys, if you hadn't asked them, is maybe during, from the three years to the 59th month, is maybe a reduced replacement plan or, you know, for the equipment, maybe get them to significantly reduce the price of equipment we would have to buy during that time for whatever purpose. Until we ask them, we're not gonna know, so I'm just asking you just to find out and give us the best options possible. I know you will.
Well, I think we can move forward to conditionally approve the lease with the understanding that these additional options or questions will be worked and communicated to individual board members for our concurrence, so that we can take advantage of the discount before December 13th.
I agree with that, I'm good with that.
Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would make the motion that we approve this budget amendment number 13, along with the approval of the long lease, long-term lease agreement with Motorola Communications, contingent upon all the issues being appropriately settled and mutually agreed upon, the terms and conditions being negotiated. With addition to that, direct staff to see if it's possible to purchase an extended warranty on them or to figure out a plan to fill in the gap.
I think we all know what that looks like, more or less. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries you now, sir.
Aye.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Thank you, Kent, and we appreciate the work that you've done on behalf of our volunteer firemen, getting them the right equipment, from apparatus to communications, and a sustainable way forward. Thank you. Okay, could you summarize quickly the administrative matters?
Absolutely. The first item was a request from the Health Department for approval of budget amendment number 12, to expend $49,973 in the multi-year, $274,963 awarded community linkages to care for overdose prevention grant from the North Carolina Department of Health and Human Services. And as we spoke about in the pre-agenda, this is a multi-year grant, and we're just budgeting to expend one-year worth of funds for 49,000. A request from Planning and Development for approval of a grant application with the Charlotte Regional Transportation Planning Organization to pursue a transportation plan. A request from Tax Administration for approval of a sole-source award contract with pictometry to perform two countywide pictometry imagery captures over seven years. And then finally, a request from Human Resources for approval of public official bond renewal in accordance with North Carolina general statute.
Is there any further discussion on any of those items? Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion to approve, Mr. Chairman.
Motion by Commissioner Norman. All in favor, please say aye.
Aha.
Those like, sign.
Aye.
Motion carries you now, honestly. And now, we'll circle back to the final item on the agenda tonight, and what everybody's been waiting for, is the public hearing to consider adoption of bond orders authorizing $115,500,000 in school bonds and $10.5 million of community college bonds, first introduced on November 19th, 2019. So, at this time, I'm going to ask, we have basically three groups of presenters this evening, four groups, I should say. First will be Jennifer Christian, who is the chairwoman of the Iredell County Facilities Task Force, who is going, and I don't know, it's Jennifer here, there we go. And she's gonna give us an overview of the process that the Facilities Task Force used to be able to identify and quantify and prioritize all of the capital requirements for our two school systems, Iredell Statesville Schools and Mooresville Graded School District, as well as Mitchell Community College. I'll say that this is a process that was agreed upon between the school systems and the County Board of Commissioners in 2004, and has been used since then to lay out for a 10-year period the anticipated capital requirements. We asked the board, we asked this task force, and Jennifer will review, you know, the constitution of that task force, but we asked them to put in a lot of time, this was not a three-month kiss-and-tell kind of endeavor. This was basically, this is the culmination of two years' worth of work that took a year's worth of fact gathering, visitation of every school in the system, as well as crunching numbers, prioritizing, back and forth. Had two members from the Board of Commissioners there, not as much to participate, but just to be aware of the direction of the discussion, and have a real confidence level, warm and fuzzy, about the level of detail and analysis. The first cut recommendations were briefed to the Board of Commissioners at a retreat in February of this year, and they've worked with staff to crunch the numbers in terms of us looking, okay, how do we fund these requirements? And have come back with some amended recommendations based on the dollars that we had available to apply to various requirements in the first phase. So, just providing a little bit of context, we're teeing it up to Jennifer Christian.
Thank you, Chairman Mallory, and as well, the fellow county commissioners and Iredell County staff. And I do want to also recognize, we have Brady Johnson, superintendent from ISS, as well as staff from ISS, Dr. Mooney from Mooresville Graded, as well as staff and board members from Mooresville Graded, and also representatives from Mitchell Community College. But I also would like to recognize, we have members from the Facilities Task Force, of which there were 19 of us, and if those folks don't mind standing, we've got Chris Schubridge, Barb Thorson, vice chair, Dr. Knight, we've got Martin Page, the chair of the Iredell Statesville Schools. So, thank you. And to your point, Chairman Mallory, the first meeting was actually two years and seven months ago to the day, on May 3rd of 2017, when the group started. And again, just to provide kind of a recap and some context before the public hearing gets underway, the task force is made up of 19 people from every corner of Iredell County. It includes parents and grandparents, local business owners, current and former teachers, principals, school board members, real estate agents, former military, and more. So, we really did have a broad cross-section, both from life experience as well as geography around the county. And the task force really worked over two-plus years reviewing capacity data at all schools, looking at housing start data and population growth projections, going over existing and deferred maintenance projects, conducting school and facility tours and site visits throughout ISS, Mooresville Graded, and Mitchell, all in an effort to fully understand the expansion, renovation, and potential construction needs for our educational facilities in the county. And I would like to point out that there was unanimous approval of those recommendations from the task force, and we created a 10-year plan that included three phases. Phase one is only three years from that 10-year plan, and those being the most mission-critical and time-sensitive projects. As you stated, the task force made a presentation to the county commissioners in February of this year, and everyone that was on the task force was unanimous in supporting those recommendations. Similarly, the ISS School Board, Mooresville Graded School Board, and Mitchell Board of Trustees, all unanimously passed resolutions to then move forward and made the request formally to the Board of Commissioners to place this bond on the ballot in March of 2020. Just to give kind of some additional background, due to the effective management of funds by the county and those at the districts and at Mitchell, as well as a positive bid climate, lower-than-anticipated closing costs and favorable interest rates, the county found itself in a very fortunate position, actually with a bond reserve fund from this process last year in 2014, and that allowed us to complete, will be able to allow us to complete many of those phase-one mission-critical projects. So, just a quick kind of overview of what those include. For ISS, that means that West High will receive a new state-of-the-art vocational shops, as well as renovated and repurposed old shop area at West High. Statesville High School will see new CTE shops to support the career tech program, as well as physical education upgrades. And Lake Shore Elementary School will see the addition of four to six classrooms. All of those were identified in phase one, but are taken care of with that sound fiscal management from those bond reserve funds. Additionally, for the Mooresville Graded School District, this means that with the combination of bond reserve funds and a loan, they will be able to take care of renovating and upgrading South Elementary and Park Elementary Schools, including adding a gym atorium at each school, upgrading the mechanical, electrical, and plumbing, as well as increasing parking at South Elementary and expanding the cafeteria at Parkview Elementary. And for Mitchell Community College, they were able to make some steps to either acquire some needed land or renovate the Greer Science Building. And I just point that out because all of those were phase-one mission-critical needs that have been taken care of from some bond reserve fund dollars from 2014. However, there are three phase-one critical needs that are not covered by the bond reserve funds, and really, those needs are why we are all here tonight. For Mooresville Graded, the primary need is a new middle school. This is critical to address capacity issues and as part of MGSD's plan to manage costs in the most fiscally responsible approach possible, and you may hear from some of those folks with some more specifics there. The other major project that is a critical need is a new high school within the ISS system. South Iredell High School is currently overcapacity, and this year in August welcomed their largest freshman class ever, 480 students. My son happens to be one of those kids. Lake Norman High School is also overcapacity by several hundred students, and with the current enrollment data that we're seeing in ISS schools, combined with the growth in these areas, the time to move forward with a new high school really in that area is now. Referencing the 2014 bond, by the time we complete all of those projects and open up those buildings, it will actually be fall of 2020, so that was a six-year time period, and we're overcapacity now. And then lastly, for Mitchell Community College, looking at a joint partnership for the community college bond, in cooperation with multiple entities throughout the county, will mean a combined driving pad, classroom space, storage space to support law enforcement training, firefighting, education, and EMS training, and these were all identified as key projects by Mitchell. So, in closing, I would submit that there is strong data and support to fund the remaining phase-one critical education facility needs that were identified in the 10-year master plan. Keep in mind, these are not all of the needs, these are the ones that were identified as phase-one mission-critical in the first three years of that 10-year plan. But again, they're the most mission-critical, and we really tried to focus in and be good fiscal stewards. I thank all three of the educational entities, one coming to the board. So, thank you for your time. Any questions, sir, or board members, before I turn it over to the rest of our folks here?
Any questions for Ms. Christian?
Thank you, and thank you, everyone, for coming tonight. I know folks are busy at this holiday- I know folks are busy at this holiday season, so thank you.
Thank you for your dedication to this project for the last two and a half years, Ms. Christian. If we could start off with Brady Johnson. This is part of the presentation, not part of the public hearing yet.
Good evening Chairman Mallory, and Commissioners and staff. I want to thank you for this opportunity to continue this discussion and to seek your approval of placing this initiative on a ballot in March. I also want to thank those members of the Facilities Task Force. It's already been said tonight that they took this job very, very seriously and poured a lot of time and energy into this effort, and we certainly applaud them for being good servants to the public interest here in Ired County. I want to preface my remarks about the specific bond referendum by simply saying thank you to my colleagues with Mooresville Graded School System and Mitchell Community College. We are fortunate in this community to have three great school systems, and the collaboration and the spirit of working together has never been stronger between these three educational institutions, and I count that very much as a blessing, and thoroughly enjoy working with my colleagues in those neighboring school systems. When we were here back in the late summer, early fall, there was a slide that was shown here that showed the housing developments that are projected in the southern end of this county. That was a sobering slide. And Chairman Mallory, when I heard you make the comment that your planning department estimates that the population in southern Iredell County is going to double in the next 20 to 25 years, I tell you, that was breathtaking to hear that comment and to see what's happening in the way of growth down there. That is a great problem to have, it's a good reflection of the quality of life that we offer to people, and that we have families moving here from all over the world to live in our community. It has been said tonight that we are not prepared for what's awaiting us. In Iredell Statesville Schools, we have two high schools that are serving the southern end of this county, Lake Norman High School, which is a national blue-ribbon school, and South Iredell High School, which is the home to our only IBO World School, a school that has a strong vocational program, outstanding performing arts, and is home to an amazing Marine Corps ROTC program. Those schools are extremely popular, and we have people that tell me that they moved to this community so that their children could attend those schools. That is such a compliment to our community. But we are facing a crisis situation on those campuses, and if you take the opportunity to visit those campuses, you can see for yourself that in both places, we have multiple, multiple trailers in place, serving those kids. We are facing the dilemma of being able to bring in more trailers because of the watershed restrictions and things of that nature. At South Iredell High School particularly, it breaks my heart to go down there and see kids eating lunch, but there's nowhere to sit. So, they're literally going outside to picnic tables and sitting in the hallway in the floral of the hallways to eat their lunch each day. That cafeteria serving that school was built in 1966, and it hasn't grown one square inch in all that time, but the student population has doubled. You know, in addressing problems like this, school boards really have a couple of options. Option number one is they can certainly load kids on buses, and they can ship them to all parts of the county that are not experiencing growth and have empty seats in their schools, so that is certainly an option. We can certainly buy trailers, and we can add trailers within the watershed restriction requirements, but that's not such a good investment. That's a waste of tax dollars in mobile units that begin to deteriorate and decline in value the day that they're purchased. I think the best option, and the one that our school board has embraced, is neighborhood schools. Our board has said many, many times that their vision, their mission, is to make sure that kids can attend school as close to home as possible. So, that leaves the option of building the school where the kids live, and that's what this bond will allow us to do. Our board's been very, very wise in purchasing land many years ago. We have two pieces of property in the southern end of the county, the board has not decided yet which site to use for this, but both of those pieces of property are bought and paid for, and so we've got two great options down there to place this new high school. I have heard some negative people make comments since our discussions back in the late summer and the early fall, that this bond is not fair. Mooresville's getting more money than we're getting, and it should be distributed on an ADM basis, and I, you know, you can certainly say that, but I hope people are open-minded enough to look at this. When you look at all three phases of this work that the Facilities Task Force has identified, by the end of those phases, ISS is going to get the lion's share of this. We're going to get 80% of this money over the years. We may not be getting the lion's share this time, and you can certainly make the argument that on an ADM basis, we're not getting our fair share, that can be said. But I don't think that that is accurate. I think that in time, we will certainly need the support of the citizens in Mooresville, and our colleagues in Mooresville Graded to support us in future projects when they're not going to be getting a thing. And I think they're willing and able to do that for us. I think that you can also say, and I've heard some folks say this, that, well, you've got plenty of reoccurring capital dollars, so figure out a way to do this without a bond. Well, we can certainly sit down and scratch our heads and try to figure that out, but here's what's going to happen when we do that. We are going to be sucking resources out of every school in this system, all 37 schools to address this issue. So, when folks in the northern end, or the western end, or the eastern end of the county or in the municipality say, "There's nothing in this for me," yes, there is. There's the opportunity cost of losing those reoccurring capital dollars that will not be able to patch your roof or replace the air conditioning, because those dollars are going to be diverted to buy school buses and mobile units to address this growth issue in South Iredell. In closing, I would just like to simply say that I think all of us agree that public education is an investment, and if you do it well, your investment pays huge dividends to your children and ultimately to your entire community. Everybody, I think, agrees that education is an economic driver. Part of your strategic plan is economic development in this county. We are joined at the hip with you to make sure that we are addressing the long-term needs of our employers in the community. This will help us continue to do that mission. So, again, I thank you for your political courage in having this discussion, putting this out for public discussion, and I implore you tonight to please let this go forward and let the citizens of this community make this critical decision. Don't limit that decision to this room. Let's take it to the community and let every citizen have a say about this. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Johnson. Any questions for Mr. Johnson? Next, I ask Dr. Steve Mooney, the Superintendent of the Mooresville Graded School District.
Good evening Commissioners, Ms. Jones. My name is Stephen Mooney, and I'm the Superintendent of the Mooresville Graded School District. Like Mr. Johnson, first of all, I'd like to say thank you to each of you for holding this meeting, to gather input from your constituents about the potential bond referendum for our county schools. As the Superintendent of Mooresville Graded, when I walk the halls of Mooresville Middle School, I see firsthand the need that we have for a new middle school. Having a middle school in excess of 1,000 students and well over the facility's capacity limits creates major obstacles to effective teaching and learning, as well as student safety. We in MGSD, like our neighbors in ISS and Mitchell Community College, take our responsibilities to our students, staff, and our community very seriously, and I strongly believe that these facilities are necessary to effectively meet the growing needs of our community. The student population at Mooresville Middle School has increased by almost 350 students in less than 10 years, and that's why I'm here tonight, to request that you place a bond referendum on the March 2020 ballot. The Mooresville Graded School District Board of Education unanimously supports this position and has passed a formal resolution requesting such. In addition to the capacity needs that we have at Mooresville Middle School, our three elementary schools, Rocky River Elementary, South Elementary, and Parkview Elementary, are operating at 100% capacity, and like Mr. Johnson mentioned, have numerous mobile classrooms on those three campuses. And so, part of our plan to address the growth that we're seeing in our district and the capacity obstacles that we are facing, is to reconfigure our grades to our three elementary schools, or K-3 schools, kindergarten, first, second, and third grade. And with the addition of a new middle school, which this whole plan is contingent upon, getting a new middle school in Mooresville Graded, then we would reconfigure our grades at our elementary schools, instead of being kindergarten through third grade, we would make those kindergarten through second grade, therefore thereby removing an entire grade level from our three elementary schools, which will open up capacity at our elementary schools and address that need. Our intermediate schools, which are currently fourth, fifth, and sixth grade, would become third, fourth, and fifth grade, still containing three grade levels, but our intermediate schools have room for growth currently. And our middle school, which is currently seventh and eighth grade with over 1,000 kids, if, when we purchase, or when we build a new middle school and now have two middle schools in Mooresville Graded, that would allow us room to have sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, which is the very, or the most common grade configuration for middle schools in North Carolina. That would allow us to have three grade levels at our middle schools with roughly about 700 students in each middle school, and then our high school would be nine through 12. And so, that's our plan for addressing the overall growth that we are seeing in the capacity obstacles that we see in Mooresville Graded. But once again, that whole plan is contingent upon the bond funding and also the completion of a new middle school. So, I understand that decisions like this are not easy ones to make, especially when the needs of Iredell Statesville Schools, Mooresville Graded, and Mitchell Community College are all included. I do not make this request lightly. I understand the impact that it will have on our county. And with that being said, I do not see, or I do not view a bond like this one as a burden. Instead, like Mr. Johnson said, I see it as an investment in our community that will pay dividends for further growth and development in our county. And I thank you again for your consideration of this referendum, and I respectfully request that you place it on the March 2020 ballot. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Mooney. Any questions for Dr. Mooney?
Thank you very much.
I'm sorry, if I could get you to elaborate, some people have asked why this year, why didn't we wait one year or two years to do this? And the timing really had more to do with your need. Can you just expand a little bit about why your system can't wait, and what are some of the things that y'all have done that has made it where we really can't wait to do the bond until, you know, months or years from now?
Sure. Right now, our middle school is, like I mentioned, over 1,000 students, it's well over capacity. Mr. Johnson mentioned the lunch situation at South Iredell High School, and the cafeteria that was built in, what'd you say, 1966? Yeah. And, you know, our middle school is basically in the same condition as far as space for, you know, the functional capacity of the school as well, not just classroom space. And, you know, realistically, if this bond, if you were to place this on the ballot in March 2020, and the voters in the county were to approve the bond, we are still looking at two to three years out from March of having a building that will be able to be used for our students. And based on population projections and enrollment projections for our district over the next three or four years, that's going to be, you know, the addition of several hundred kids. If you look in Mooresville, within the boundaries of Mooresville Graded, at all the housing developments that are going up on Highway 3, on North Main Street, just throughout our district, there is significant housing growth there, and with those houses come, you know, new families and kids. And so, this is, if you ask me, what are the main things that kind of keep me up at night in my position as a Superintendent of Mooresville? You know, student safety's big, and, you know, we want our kids to be successful, but one of the immediate needs that I see is how are we going to have seats for our kids that we're already struggling with, you know, struggling to meet right now, the capacity limits of our school system? And that's not just at the middle school level, but at the elementary level as well. I mean, we're using every classroom, just have purchased new mobile units over the last couple of years. We'll probably have to do that before, you know, a new middle school is complete, and so it's just an immediate need for capacity reasons. And then, at our elementary schools at South and Parkview, just some major renovations that need to take place there with the mechanical, plumbing, and electrical systems that have far exceeded their life expectancies. Does that answer your question?
It does, thank you. Any additional questions? Well, thank you, Dr. Mallory. I'd now request that James Hogan, from representing Mitchell Community College, in the absence of Tim Brewer, who is out of town or otherwise committed this evening.
Thank you Chairman Mallory. I'm not the best person to speak to this, and that would be Dr. Brewer. Unfortunately, his father passed away on Thanksgiving, and he is out of town, attending to his family, and is sorry that he couldn't be here. So, I will try and do my best for the college and his stead. Thanks to each of you again, as Superintendent Johnson and Mooney have stated, for allowing us to have this conversation. My name is James Hogan. If you don't know me, I'm the Vice President for Advancement at Mitchell. Here with me tonight also is Mr. Gerald Hyde, who is our Vice President for Business and Chief Financial Officer, and Mr. Chad Lackey, who is our Director of Facilities. So, if you have technical questions, go ahead and ask them, they'll get to come up and answer them. Mitchell Community College has a truly robust and successful public safety training program, and we provide training and certification to more than 1,500 law enforcement, fire, EMT, emergency management, telecommunicator, detention officer, and paramedic professionals in our county. I think it's fair to say that we are truly a critical component of public safety in this county. And if you pick up the phone and call for help, the kind of person who shows up will need training or certification via one of the programs that Mitchell Community College offers. And as our county has grown, and as the services that the residents of Iredell County have grown with that, our programs have also experienced a lot of demand in recent years. We need more public safety professionals, and we want them to be well-trained. For example, our fire training program enrollment recently has grown 61%, and our criminal justice and BLET program enrollments are up 72% from what they were just a couple years ago. And as a result of that demand, the college is beginning to run short on instructional space, and I would actually go further to say we're out of room. Currently, our public safety programs operate out of the basement of the D. Matt Thompson Building on Front Street. It's almost 100 years old. And we joke, and we refer to the basement as the garden level of D. Matt Thompson. Others refer to it as the dungeon level, but it currently does not meet ADA requirements for accessibility, and is not the most pleasant learning environment, and it would be very expensive to try and renovate that historic building to produce the kind of space that we need. In addition to that, our ability to provide driving instruction for public safety students has also been diminished. As you heard earlier, Statesville Airport's a busy place. Turns out, you don't need to train police officers to drive around aircraft, although they think it would be fun, it does generally inhibit the safety of the airplanes. So, we can't use the airport to do high-speed chase training anymore. We can't use the airport to do fire truck driving or ambulance driving training anymore. Those things have to be performed in the parking lot behind main building, and we have to clear everybody out, and if you get into a police chase in the Walmart parking lot, I assure you, we're going to get you captured because we've trained very well in parking lots. So, our college then, with the Facilities Task Force and with the full unanimous approval of our Board of Trustees, has recognized and prioritized the need for the construction of a new public safety training facility. Now, this is a great partnership opportunity for all of us here in this county. Our proposed facility would provide a 36,000-square-foot driving pad, as well as instructional classroom space and storage space for all of our public safety equipment, which currently has to sit outside in the weather and the elements, which isn't good for things like fire trucks that have giant water takes in them. This facility would allow us to partner with our friends, with the Iredell County Sheriff's Office, the Mooresville Office, the Mooresville, Stateville, and Troutman Police Departments, all of our city and town and county fire departments, Iredell EMS and Rescue, and lots of other area agencies to not only train their professionals, but retrain and recertify and give them the opportunity to work with the equipment that they use every day in their job and that they use in service to us when we need them very much. We'll also have the opportunity to develop new programs and partnerships at this facility, including, for example, with area transportation departments, bus drivers need training, that kind of thing. And I think that we would finally be giving our public safety staff and faculty a facility that matches their talents as instructors. We do a very good job, if I may humbly brag, on Mitchell Community College in training law enforcement and fire and EMT paramedics. I am confident, if I ever have an emergency, that a qualified, trained professional is going to come to my assistance, and I'm grateful for the fact that we are able to instruct them as well as we do at Mitchell Community College. And I'll close with this, and hopefully Commissioner Robertson will appreciate some of these numbers. We, as a community college, do impact the bottom line in Iredell County. If you invest a dollar as a student in your education at Mitchell Community College over your lifetime, you will see a 4.6-fold return on that. In other words, you'll get $4.60 back in earning potential for every dollar that you spend on your education at Mitchell. And as taxpayers, for every dollar that we invest in Mitchell Community College, we return $3.60 in economic impact through spending, through jobs, through, again, those individuals who are educated, earning in their salaries. In the fiscal year that ended in 2018, Mitchell Community College had a $193 million impact in Iredell County. I assure you that Mr. Hyde can stretch a dime further than just about anybody else, and Mr. Lackey can patch something up with everything that he's got on hand to keep our historic campus looking great and operating as well as it can. But in this case, we have a lot that we need to provide, and we need additional facilities to help us train those professionals. So, we too encourage and urge you to allow our good friends and neighbors to have the opportunity to vote on this bond referendum. We appreciate your support in this and all that you do for our community college, and appreciate your time this evening.
Thank you very much. Mr. Hogan, any questions for Mr. Hogan?
Yeah, I've spent most, I've asked most of my questions to Mooresville and Iredell Stateville School System in the past meeting. I've left Mitchell alone. Now that Dr. Brewer is gone, it's your turn, okay? So, I'm going to ask you, you said the number of students that you have going through your fire training is up 60%?
That's correct.
Okay. Are most of your students or a majority of your students, are they placed with our either local full-time fire departments or our volunteer fire departments?
I can't speak specifically to that.
Do any of those refuse your graduates?
No, not at all. I know that our local emergency services providers are typically looking for people, and our students are oftentimes finding their employment there. In terms of our law enforcement training, I know that our students are sometimes hired first by Iredell County Sheriff's Office or Stateville Police Department or Mooresville Police Department, and then put through BLET. So, if it gives you any indication, they'll hire somebody who's not actually trained and prepared to go out on the street as a police officer so that they can then train them, because that's how much they need student, or excuse me, how much they need professionals to go into the force.
Okay. Any of the local fire chiefs, have any of them said that this is not needed?
Not to my knowledge, sir, but...
Okay. All right. Y'all do paramedic trainings for EMS?
Yes, sir.
Have any of those ended up in the county system? Do you know?
I'm confident that they do. Again, I don't know the exact percentages, but I know that they do.
I can help you with that when the answer is yes.
Yes. Thank you.
Okay. And I know we always have turnover in that department or in that profession.
Sure.
Because it's really not, I've talked to folks in other states, and that's just an area where there's a lot, it's a lot of turnover. You say you do a lot of training and recertification for both police and fire?
To my knowledge, all of our emergency services, as they have to be recertified or certified on new systems or technologies, they traditionally come through us.
Okay. Do we have any of the entities in the county, either the municipalities or the county departments, do any of them not use your recertification training program?
I cannot answer that question knowingly. It's absolutely possible they could, but to my knowledge, I'm not aware, but I would need to get back to you with a better answer than that.
Okay.
And I'll do that.
You said BLT, BLET is up 72%?
Yes, sir.
Safe to say that most of your, many of your BLET grads are going to work for the three police departments and the sheriff's department in the county?
Yes, or Charlotte Mecklenburg. Sometimes areas outside of here have higher salaries and attract some of our cadets.
All right. Any of those departments, okay, so it's safe to say they all accept your...
Absolutely.
Your graduates? And have any of them said that this is a waste of money, that they don't need this?
Not to my knowledge.
That's it? Thank you.
Mr. Hogan, I haven't heard you speak about the nursing program. You still have a real strong nursing program, correct?
Yes, sir. In fact, if I can expand just a little bit on that, we're nearing the completion of our 2014 Bond Referendum Project, which is a 40,000-square-foot health sciences facility that is on West End Avenue. In the last several years, based on the licensure testing scores, Mitchell Community College has had a top five and in some cases, a top three nursing program in the state of North Carolina. And I say that to point out that other schools you may have heard of, like Chapel Hill or Duke, are not in the top five or the top three. Mitchell Community College is. And I can say with perhaps some boldness that with a facility like the one we're about to take ownership of and the equipment that we're going to be able to put into it, we have the opportunity to be the best nursing program in the state of North Carolina. A facility has played a large part in that. It'll allow us to continue this education and allow us to grow that program.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Any further questions? Thank you very much.
James, I've got some comments if I can.
Yes, sir.
I just wanted to say that Marvin and I on the Education Task Force, when this Facilities Task Force was commissioned, you know, with the three school systems and the Facilities Task Force people, Marvin and I served basically in an advisory and observation capacity, because we wanted the stakeholders that was appointed, that Jennifer mentioned, to work with the school personnel and prioritize these projects. And I think they carefully and methodically did that, and I think they worked very hard to vet these projects, to prioritize these projects. I want the citizens to understand how many trips these people made to the entities in the school system buildings throughout this county. And I just want people to understand the amount of effort that went in by the school facilities people, the stakeholders that served on this board from the community, their stakeholders, taxpayers, business leaders, as Jennifer said. I think that's very important, that these are not just people from the school system saying, "This is what I want." These are needs that have been prioritized and vetted. So, I wanted people to realize that. I also wanted to say that, you know, I'm down here in Washington with county commissioners from around the state. The bond issues that are coming up and have come up in recent years, the biggest thing people need to realize is this is nothing more than a borrowing mechanism approved by the citizens, government forbear and of the people. It allows the counties to borrow the money at a lower interest rate if it's voter-approved. I want people to remember that the monies that were saved from 2014 bonds that was approved by Iredell County citizens, they invested in these projects. This money has been approved to be repurposed. Those projects reduce the size of this Phase One bond if it passes. That will impact all geographical areas, as has been stated here tonight, of the county. So, all geographical areas and schools in the county, in some capacity, are impacted positively from the last bond. This is just a capacity bond to address the growth in the county. And I want everybody to understand that this is an investment. The economic growth benefits from the programs of these three entities that they provide, these commissioners from around the state that I talk to on this board down here, I can tell you, the two systems we have in Iredell County, along with the community college that we have, guys, these people from around the state are trying to duplicate what we have in Iredell County, James. And so, what I wanted to tell people and let them understand is the choice programs, the workforce development programs, the three systems and our board, the relationship between the school boards and Mitchell College and the Board of Commissioners, that is a rare, rare, rare working relationship. We don't always agree because we sit in different seats, but we try to work things out on behalf of the citizens. I want people to understand these things have been vetted very carefully. I also want to say to the citizens, I get questions all the time being on the Education Task Force, "Why should I support a bond? I don't have kids or grandkids in the school system." Well, my answer to them is it's an investment in our county because of the balanced growth. It keeps our ad valorem tax rates low, people that have disposable income, better jobs, sales tax revenues are up. We are still lower with a one, this would require a one penny increase if approved, and the other money would come from repurposed debt rolling off the books as investments from the past are paid off. So, I just wanted to say that. And to Brady's point from earlier, people talk about proportion. This bond in Phase One, which is a capacity-only bond, Iredell Stateville Schools is 64% of the bond. Mitchell's 20, I mean, Mooresville Graded is 28%. Mitchell's 8%. But I want people to understand the equity situation corrects itself if Phase One passes, because in Phase Two and Three, Mooresville Graded does not have any projects in Phase Two and Three. So, some of that equity that people get caught up in proportion-wise, I want them to understand it corrects itself, because as commissioners, our job is to repurpose and invest tax dollars where the most need is. As you heard, Mooresville Graded right now cannot wait because of capacity. I want the citizens to understand the questions we get. You know, there's 10,000, I think, approved projects going on now. We cannot legally charge impact fees to developers. In the last public hearing we had, people wanted, people got up and spoke about the system being audited. There's an annual audit every year, every year of the county and every of all three of these entities. So, I wanted to point that out again, if I may. And I just want to ask the citizens from this perspective, if you support this investment, it allows us to borrow the money at a lower interest rate, it addresses the capacity needs, because I can tell you the other options people will not be happy with, because the school systems, along with us, we will have to make redistricting decisions, moving kids west and north. These are realistic alternatives. But I just wanted to point out some of these things. I appreciate you guys listening to that, but down here with these commissioners from around the state, guys, I can tell you, Iredell County has good problems, because these other people would love to have the problems we have because of growth. But to the citizens that are concerned about the tax rate, fixed incomes, we respect that. We hear you, and we are representing you too. But I want you to understand it's an investment. But I'll let you go on with the process, but I just thought it was important to let you guys know, serving on that task force, it's 54% of our budget. I think it's one of the most important task forces we have. It is an investment, but I'll shut up now. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner Howe. Okay, at this time, this is the hour and day fixed by the Board of Commissioners for a public hearing upon the orders entitled, quote, "Order authorizing $115 million, $500,000 in school bonds," and order authorizing $10 million, $500,000 community college bonds, and that the Board of Commissioners would immediately hear anyone who might wish to be heard on the questions of the validity of said orders or the advisability of issuing said bonds. That being said, I'll now open the public hearing, and I'll call your name, and if you could come up to the podium, announce your name for the record and your address, your home address. You'll be limited to five minutes, which is displayed on the clock in front of the clerk and displayed on the clock in front of me. So, we'll start off, Mr. Scott Clontz.
Commissioner Mallory, members of the commission, Ms. Jones. I'm Scott Clontz. I'm from 155 Jetstream Way, Stateville, North Carolina. I was educated in the Iredell Stateville, Iredell County School System. I did 90% of my professional training at the Stateville Airport. I have soloed my son and my nephew at the Stateville Airport, served on the Facilities Task Force in 2011, and I basically come to you tonight to say that I support the construction of a high school for the Iredell Stateville School System. Why does this process have to be so contentious? Probably because of the process. Months ago, this body heard the Facilities Task Force report. Word traveled through the community that this board asked each respective education board to send a resolution requesting a bond, the ultimate quid pro quo, holding $20 million of taxpayer money for phase projects. I don't know if that's true or not. You guys have recordings of your process, but if that's what's going around the community, it becomes the truth. Then on October 1st, during the pre-bond public hearing, Commissioner Robertson stood at this lectern for 34 minutes of public hearing time in a very condescending tone, no disrespect, Ken. It's just, that's okay, lecturing those who may object to a referendum being placed on the ballot. So, why do we so adamantly oppose each other for our opinions? Well, fortunately, my career enabled me to be in Barbados up till yesterday afternoon, and if I wanted a Coke in Barbados, I could walk 500 yards to Andrew's Fish Shop and get it for a dollar and a quarter. Or I could go to the gift shop in the Hilton and get it for $2.50. Or if I wanted to get it at the restaurant, it was $3.50. Some people in this county just want to walk the extra 500 yards. They want to make sure that you squeeze every dime out of every dollar of taxpayer You guys, as I have also served in state capacity, live to an ethics policy and go through training, and that training is related to, thank you, iPhone, General Statute 160A86, which talks about local governing board's code of ethics. And B, two, and three allude to the fact that there's a need to uphold the integrity and independence of a board member's office and the need to avoid impropriety in the exercises of that board member's official duties. Well, that also alludes to the performance of other elected board members' duties. Last night, one of your own members lectured the Iredell Stateville School Board about getting on board with this bond. on board with this bond. Mr. Howe, if you want to run for school board, filing's open. So some wonder why animosity develops. I'm very proud to be a citizen of Iredell County. I'm very proud to be a taxpayer. I'm very proud to say that I've written checks. I'm very proud to say that I'm sure the southern end of the county needs a high school real soon. But some people just want to walk an extra 500 yards to get their Coke. Thank you very much.
Now, Mr. Martin Page, who is the chairman of the Iredell Stateful School Board.
And I totally agree with something Scott said was, why, you know, I just think this is really complicated, and we in government tend to do that. Let's face it, you can, we can either stop the growth in Iredell County, or we got to build schools. Bottom line. Hope you let the people decide. Thank you.
Page, Chris Schubry.
Good evening. I'm Chris Schubridge, 546 Elmwood Road. I live in the Cool Spring area, and I've been a taxpayer here in Iredell County for 30 years. I'm a Realtor. I know the importance of schools to people considering a move to Iredell County. The school facilities are absolutely important, as are the quality of the schools for which we're striving. I'm also a parent of two children that have successfully negotiated the county school system and have been excellent products of it, and I appreciate what the school system has done for them. I'm a member of the School Facilities Task Force. I believe I was on that first task force going back to 2005, so I've had an extended view of the process. Based on my personal assessment of the factors, I feel this potential school bond is a very essential item, and I think it is absolutely as minimal as possible in scope. Growth is here and it's coming, and the needs are very real and legitimate, in my opinion. I'm personally convinced that the school bonds are past and present and in the future have been and will be well supported and managed by the local systems. The current school proposal includes new construction, but I know that in the past 20 years, there has been an extensive distribution of funds across the county. You can just write around the, you can write around the Iredell schools, and you can see the drastic improvements that have been made from, in all areas of the county. So for these reasons, I'm totally supporting, asking for your support for this proposed referendum. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Schubridge. Shannon Vera.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to come back and speak again. Last time I told you kind of a little personal story about myself and how much we really felt that the school system had a lot to offer. It was one of the things that drove, that drove us here. We live in Statesville. We live on, at the country club down Wentworth Street. Come by and have a glass of wine or a coffee with me anytime. But I serve as the president of the Greater Statesville Chamber of Commerce. I've been there, I've been here for a full year now, so I feel like I've kind of got my feet wet. I'm up to my knees and everything now. And the one thing about the Chamber of Commerce here that I love is our dedication that our board has to recognizing the importance of education in our community. We live and breathe it every single day. It's part of our mission. It's part of our strategic plan. One of our longest standing committees is our Education and Workforce Development Committee. We have a strong group there. We have representatives from the school district there, ISS, Iredell Statesville. We also have Charter School. We have Mitchell Community College. We have a university that drives to Iredell County just to come and sit through our meetings and local businesses as well, and they're all dedicated to those, to serving our community. And I just wanted to point out that we do support this bond. We think it's important. Brady said it. Dr. Mooney said it. Commissioner Help, said it. Public education is an investment in our community, whether you have children here or not. We support this bond. We support that hopefully you'll put it on the ballot. And I made a few more notes. What did I leave out? The two things that we work on for Education and Workforce, we partner with Iredell Stateful Schools. We, we have 45 11th graders from west, not 45, 45 total, but they all come from west, north, south, Statesville, ASIC, and Crossroads Schools. I spend, I spend one day a month with these kids for about five or six months out of the, out of the school year, and we talk to them about Statesville. We take them around. It's a, it's a youth leadership program, and we're very proud of that. We've been doing that program for over 30 years, and we have, get to know these kids and what they love about Statesville area. Why, you know, a lot of them say they want to leave and, and not come back, and so our goal is to try to educate them and see why they need to stay here. And we also use it as an opportunity to talk to them about what is here, because a lot of times they don't understand the industry that we have here. They just kind of, they're very narrow focused. So we've loved that partnership and hope we can continue it. And we also work with our larger industries because their biggest concern is workforce. So we have just created a new committee called Talent and Workfor, a talent attraction committee, where we're trying to grow our homegrown talent and try to get the businesses more involved in the schools at the school level. So we are working through that, and we've been, had a great opportunity to work with north, south, I'm sorry, northwest and Statesville High Schools to allow us to be able to bring the business community into the schools. And we do a couple of different programs through that that are brand new this year. And we're, we're proud of that, and we know, and the businesses know how important education is, and they're going to support this as well. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much, Ms. Vera. Okay, Mr. Doug Knight.
My name is Doug Knight. I live at 173 Back Creek Lane, if you don't know where that's at. That's off the Buffalo Shoals Road, near Old Mountain Road, so it's out in the country in West Iredell a little bit. I love it out there. I grew up in Cowal County. I've been here about 10 years, and I'm proud, plan to stay here and put down roots. I love it here. This is a good place to be. I've got two kids currently in the system. Third, my oldest, graduated from West Iredell last year. And West Iredell has well prepared him for college. Do you want to? Sure. I want to, I was the vice chair of the Facilities Task Force. I'm also an engineering physics professor at Lenora Ryan University, and full disclosure, I do plan on running for school board next year in District 4. I'd want to talk a little bit about the process and some of my thoughts. It took a long process to get here. We did a thorough examination of the needs presented to the task force. This wasn't a yes group, and I want people to know that, and I want you to know that. I like being a contrarian at times, and you got to ask questions. And it was more than just me, but there was tough, tough questions by a lot of people. The needs presented were evaluated for validity based on the basis for why they were presented. And that kind of gets into, that can get contentious. Lots of back and forth. It did get a little heated at times, you know, but I think that's okay. Contention is good a little bit if it's professional. But, you know, what's here now, I think, is the best determination of the high value needs that we were presented and what's needed by the systems going forward. Mooresville Graded needs a new middle school. They need it bad. Their overcrowding is getting bad. We know, well, it's, we, everyone knows what's going on down there. The education quality is going down. If we don't, if they don't take care of that, I like, I really like their growth plan, how they're changing around the rejiggering of their grading system in each school. I think that is fiscally sound and very well thought out and will help educationally going forward. If you don't know, I have taught high school six years and in my previous career before I went back to grad school. So I've kind of been at multiple levels. ISS definitely needs a new high school. Their demographics going forward demand it. Elsewise, you're going to be busing people halfway across the county. We know what busing does. Those are old enough to remember busing from the 70s. Education quality, we want to keep it high, and we're going to have to have a new high school to keep it that way for the overcrowding and the prevention and the busing. Mitchell College, if you know, I worked there 10 years as a physics and engineering professor. The groups, the programs they're wanting to do better with are some of their most critical ones. Makes a difference for public benefit and for job training, and which is really, I was more in job transfer, but I did do some in the job training side. That's the, that's why we have community colleges, and they do a good, Mitchell does a good job with there, and they need this going forward. I guess the issue I had initially with this has been the process of the quarter cent sales tax. That left a bad taste in my mouth, to be honest, and it did for a lot of voters. You know, we had behind the scenes stuff going on that got out. We had obfuscation that got out. That was going, meetings on meetings on meetings. And honestly, from my perspective, for good reason, it was voted down. There just wasn't a lot of confidence that it would be handled correctly. And that's why, I mean, I'm skeptical by nature, but that's why I think going forward, we've got some good, we've got some good things going forward with the $20 million given back. That gives hope. I think we still need to do our due diligence, but I think that $20 million given back, if the bond passes, unfortunately, it'll be a tax increase, and that's not good. I have been paycheck to paycheck. I have family members that are on fixed income. Actually, I have some family members back home that decide between food and medicine. You know, and this is not just cheeseburgers, those people, as things have been said in the past. The problem is, these, these needs are real. They're not going away. They're going to cost more going forward. And that's, would be even worse for those, those sorts of persons. And for those reasons, I am for putting a bond referendum to vote. I think, I think it's needed. I do reserve the right to change. If there's political shenanigans that go on by politicians, not that they would ever do that, but I think it, it's needed going forward. Just do this the right way. That's my only thing I ask. Do this the right way. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Hogan. Is David Lockhart here? I'm not seeing him.
Good evening, commissioners. Thank you so much for the opportunity to be able to speak out again this evening. The last time I was here, I came out of the gate saying I was opposed to this bond. I have not changed my mind, and I would ask that you would respectfully listen to why. I'm not anti-growth, but I am anti irresponsible spending, and taxation and bonds and grants are not fiscally responsible. They're not even constitutionally valid when we consider that all of these come at the expense of our taxpayers. All right. According to your own 2019-20 budget memo, at least 48% of every county citizen's tax dollars goes to education. Both in Iredell, Statesville, and Mooresville Graded, we're going to see an increase in funding. However, since the Every Student Succeeds Act mandated things like safe schools and innovations for 21st century competency, we need to look at how much of the remaining 52% of our tax dollars are going towards our kowtowing to the North Carolina Every Student Succeeds Act. Public safety, 20.4%. Capital improvements, 1.4. Iredell's building and land, 2.6. And then human services, 14.5. When you add all those up and how they are overreaching into education, that is 86.9% of our taxpayer dollars going towards education and related services. And this is before this proposed $126 million bond. Not only are my taxes, along with everyone else in this room, being used in unconstitutional ways, these are dollars that are being mixed with federal funds, which not only violate the 10th Amendment to the Constitution, but are a direct violation of U.S. Code 20, 1232A, which states that all federal overreaches into education, including funding, are against the law. Any law or program that sets up to support these kinds of laws at a local, state, or federal level are repugnant to our Constitution, and they shouldn't even be honored nor even considered as valid. And that is off the court decision of Marbury versus Madison. Yet US commissions want us to fully support a bond like this. Have you read the Every Student Succeeds Act? All 100, all 391 pages? Do you know the future that you're setting up for Iredell students with school buildings that are totally devoted to workforce development, career tech education, and computer-based learning? I have, and it's not too far removed from indentured servitude, which is a violation of our 13th Amendment. My research exceeds the five minutes that I've been given, so I'm going to summarize it this way. By housing underage students in workforce prep schools, you are willing to violate their civil rights and take away their pursuits of life, liberty, and happiness in exchange for money. We did it in NC with Race to the Top. It's been continued and codified with the Every Student Succeeds Act, and it has to stop. We even have our own NC federal representative who is wanting to enforce K through 12 apprenticeships. Now kindergarten apprenticeships, are you kidding me? Our children are worth more than selling them out to a globally aligned competency system, which will reduce our children to control bits of data. We are actually putting our kids on a treadmill of hurry up to learn so you can hurry up to earn. Now, if we want new schools, let's lighten the loads of the bureaucrats and their salaries and free up those funds to support our teachers. That might be fiscally responsible. And all the shiny new school buildings in the county will not matter if our kids keep failing academically. This skill-based competency education removed knowledge-based education learning and replaced it with a false mastery. I could provide more, much more documentation on how Iredell is willingly being a participant in this, with or without the parental knowledge of the massive data intrusions that go with it. So I will not, and I urge my fellow citizens, to not be a part of this bond. If passed, this bond will only be followed by future ones because there's never enough money to throw at a problem and continue to see it unresolved. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Taylor. Let's see, is Gerald Hyde want to speak? No.
Good evening, commissioners. Ms. Jones. My name is Tane McLean. I reside at 2362 Statesville Highway in Mooresville. In the interest of transparency, I do work for our Mooresville Public Schools, but that's not why I'm here this evening. I am here this evening to speak as a taxpaying citizen of Iredell County. I know there are very few people who actually enjoy or get excited about paying taxes. My dad was one of them, but he was also one of the wisest people I've ever known. You see, despite not having a higher education, he valued it. He valued education. So I grew up a farmer's daughter in very rural Kansas, and as family farmers, I can promise you, we never got too excited when we had to pay our property taxes every year. But my dad would always say, and I know many of you have probably heard this, there's only two guarantees in life, death and paying taxes. But then he would follow it up with, and if I'm going to pay taxes, I want to know that they are for the betterment of my community. He never balked at supporting education because he knew that it was for the betterment of our community. He understood that he could pay taxes for schools and education, or he could pay taxes for gels and inmate support because there's a correlation between excellent education systems and lower crime. He also understood there's a correlation between good, good educational systems and business growth, which brings in tax revenues for our county. But enough about my memories and enough about taxes, and I probably should and could speak to the urgent necessity of this school bond that we need for overcrowding and growth. But I think most of the people here know the reasons we need this bond, and I think most of the people here know what we need to do to remedy that. So in the spirit of the holiday that we just celebrated, what I really want to say this evening is thank you. I want to say thank you to the people of Iredell County who support all three of our school systems and our children. And I want to thank all of you, our county commissioners, because you see, I understand that this is not an easy decision. that this is not an easy decision. I see the social media comments and posts, and to be honest with you, I realize people can be pretty darn mean when it comes to school bonds and tax increases, no matter how minimal they may be. But what people may not realize is you're simply doing your job. You see, North Carolina general statute gives the responsibility of building, equipping, and maintaining school facilities to our North Carolina county governments. GS 115C 408B stipulates that public school facility requirements will be met by our county governments. So we're very fortunate to have three excellent school systems in our county, and you play an important role in that excellence by taking your responsibility to our schools seriously and with solemn deliberation. So from me, and on behalf of my husband and my two children, I want to say thank you. We are grateful, as Iredale citizens, that you are being forward-thinking, and that you are working for and in the best interest of our schools, our children, our community, and our county. So I hope you will place this bond on a ballot so that the citizens can decide. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McLean. The last person we have signed up to speak is Ms. Beth Pakman.
All right, Ms. Jones, I'm going to ask you to invest in one small thing for me, and that's a step stool for the next time I have to come speak.
I could use it too, I understand.
I'm Beth Pakman, and I live at 104 Billens Gate Court in Mooresville. I am, for those of you who don't know, President of Our Schools First, which is a nonpartisan, pro-public education advocacy group here in Iredale County. We're made up of business leaders, community leaders, and parents who value education and see it as an economic driver in our county. We came into existence to support the 2014 bond referendum. Mr. Halt already took most of my speech, so in order to shorten things up...
Repeat it, Jane.
Jane, that's right, Jane. I wanted to say thank you to our school systems, because for the last five years, I've watched what they have accomplished with the money that the taxpayers gave them in 2014. And we're getting ready to complete and come online with the last of those projects, with the new health sciences building, and two brand-new middle schools by August of next year. And every single one of those projects has come in on time, and either on budget or even under budget. And a special thank you to Mr. Rob Jackson, who isn't here, but he has been the manager of those projects for ISS, and the man has worked magic. I also want to come at this with a financial perspective. We've heard a lot of different things this evening, and many of you don't know that I have a master's in business. After talking and listening, this bond is the best stewardship of your tax money. If you look at the way interest rates are right now, the county commissioners have so many different projects and so many different needs from across the county to balance, that asking to take out a loan at very low interest rates is one of the absolute best ways to use our money wisely in the county. I also want to look at the amazing job that Ms. Jones and our financial team here in the county have done in being able to provide us with an additional $21 million from the 2014 bond. That's going to allow us to help take care of those Phase 1 projects. I also would like to say that what would happen if we don't pass this bond? For those of you who live in the southern end of the county, I don't know about you, but I don't relish the fact of putting my child on the bus for 52 miles. Iredale Statesville Schools, for those of you who don't know, is the largest transportation company in Iredale County. They move over 14,000 students out of 21,000 students twice a day. That's, that's pretty amazing, when you think about what they do. And I personally, as a taxpayer, don't want to have to pay for more gas to make that happen. Mr. Robertson, last, at the October meeting, did the math for us and projected what that would cost, and it's, it's a waste of my money as a taxpayer. I wanted to also just lastly mention that I am a registered Republican, and that probably comes as a surprise to most of the people in this room, and I have been one ever since I graduated from college. I don't like to waste money, but I also understand how to invest it in the future, and this is the best way, at this point in time, to invest in our county. I would ask everyone in this room, and Mr. Clontz, I did hear you say you supported building a new high school, so I'm going to ask you all to join me in asking the county commissioners to put the bond on the ballot, and then join me and Our Schools First to educate the county and convince them of its importance for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Pakman. That completes the list of folks who have signed up to be heard. I'd inquire if there's anyone else that'd like to be heard. I would like to recognize also the chairman of the Mooresville Graded School District, Mr. Roger Hyatt, who's with us this evening, and other members of the school board from Mooresville and also from Statesville, Iredale Statesville Schools. At this time, I will close the public hearing and ask if there's some comments from commissioners.
James, I've got some comments I need to reply to. And I'll start off again by saying that I respect all opinions, even the ones I don't agree with. But to the point, I want to respond, you know, as commissioners, our job statutorily, as Ms. McLean explained, is to provide the safe facilities and adequate facilities for the schools. The speakers stand up, and they want to criticize our efforts to come up with common sense, balanced growth, good options, and government for by and of the people. When you, when you want to challenge elected officials' ethics, because, to respond from last night, the school board at Iredale Statesville Schools asked me to comment about the bond and ongoing issues they had discussed that night. All I said was, we need to speak in one voice, we need to support the projects the Facilities Task Force and the school board had voted on, and speak with one voice to the public. I also stated in the same comments that we don't always agree, and that doesn't make anybody wrong, it makes us different. But it is my elected job, and also as an elected official, I don't lose my right as a taxpaying citizen to have an opinion either. So to the point of ethics, it's my job and voted duty, because 54% of our revenue from Iredale County goes to the schools. So we are tasked with providing these facilities, we're a good steward of taxpayer dollars, and I just want to say, I'll use a quote from my colleague, Mr. Norman. If some of these people think this job is easy, and they think that it's so, there's so many solutions out there, I filed for office yesterday, the filing period's open. Please run for office and get in the arena. It's easy to sit in the cheap seats and take cheap shots. But I will say to Mr. Knight's point, this is the right way to ask the citizens of Iredale County or in this country, government for by and of the people, it's their money. All we, as commissioners, are doing in 2014, we unanimously put the bond on the ballot for the citizens of Iredale County to decide if they want to invest in it, and they did. There was no quid pro quo about $20 million that was saved and repurposed from the 2014 bonds to reduce the size of this Phase 1 bond that benefits the schools again in Iredale County. That's good stewardship of the taxpayer dollars. To criticize my colleague, Mr. Robertson, he gave a very good presentation and a valid, adequate presentation about the options if, if funding mechanisms are not approved by the voters. So all I want to say is, with all due respect, there's audits, everybody has their points of view, everybody differs in different ways to make this happen, but Mr. Clontz says he supports to build a high school. We don't print money, and we don't have it sitting in the bank. So the way you do that is you ask the stakeholders in this county, the taxpayers that he says he supports, to make a decision to invest in these projects. The elected boards brought these projects to us. It's our job to pay for them, so we're asking the citizens of Iredale County to invest in it. So you can insult me all day long, but I'm proud to stand up for the citizens of Iredale County and do what I think is right with my other board members, because we so far have been unanimous to send it to the voters. And I do respect your opinions. I honestly do. I don't agree with them, but there's no other options from our point of view. But I also want to say, again, it's a borrowing mechanism if approved by the voters. It allows us to borrow the money at a lower tax rate, or interest rate, rather, and it is an investment to all citizens of Iredale County. It impacts and drives our economic viability. So I just want to respectfully say, these are our options, they're not all pretty, they're not all easy. It's real easy to get up there and criticize people, but get in the arena if you've got better solutions.
Thank you, sir.
Okay, Commissioner Robertson. Thank you, Commissioner Halt.
I was just going to make a few points. You know, since this topic has been brought up, I've heard a lot of people share opinions. What I've not heard is anybody offering an actual solution about where we're going to get the money to put an additional 1,500 to 1,600 high school students who live, who will live, don't live there now, but they will live, predominantly Troutman South, okay? So despite anything else that's said, until you have an alternative solution for where we're going to put 1,600 students who are going to live Troutman South, then you're not part of the solution. Be part of the solution. Now, I'd like, well, the person who said it is gone. A famous person once said, "A rumor makes it around the world twice before the truth gets out of bed." Another person said, "The first casualty in anonymity is civility." And I'd agree to both of those things. I'm going to add a quote. This is etched in stone at the U.S. Military Academy at West Point, and you can't read these words etched in stone and not move you. It's part of the cadet prayer. It says, "God, make us choose the harder right over the easier wrong, and never let us accept a half-truth when the whole truth can be one." Okay? So that tells you a whole lot about folks who spread half-truths.
Amen, or lies.
Now, I'm going to tell you, this, this insinuation of some sort of dealings about this bond, let me tell you how it came about. I was recently reappointed to the board, and there was some additional capital from the previous bonds that was available, and, and this board said, "We'll, we'll use that to help for, with school capital needs." Now, the, the message in there that nobody's hearing is that there was, what, almost 20, how much was it?
21 million.
$21 million that could have been spent earlier on those projects and wasn't. So if anybody thinks, oh, they just waste all the money, spend all the money, heck no. Smart people at the county managing the money, smart people running the projects for the school systems are the reason why there was a $20 million amount of money that could be spread. When I came in, I looked, I looked, along with my fellow board members, we all looked at this task force recommendations. What did she say? They spent, they spent 2.7, two years, seven months? They spent over two years, 19 people. Mr. Knight, you're a mechanical engineer, I know you're a numbers man. I have confidence that what they went through was at least well thought out. Whatever you want to say, good, bad, or indifferent, it was at least vetted. And when I looked at what that, that recommendation from the Facilities Task Force had in there, there was this big fat 800, $80 million gorilla high school. And I said, before we spend any of the money, before we spend any of the money, I think we need to look at the whole picture and make sure that we're doing the first things first, doing the highest priority projects, and not ignoring them simply because there wasn't money at hand. Let's take a holistic view of what the needs were, what the priorities were, and what's the money at hand. And we all agreed, Mr. Knight, that we absolutely 100% did not want to do what happened with the sales tax referendum. And that, that meant that our board needed to be in sync with the Mooresville Graded School District Board, the Iredale Statesville School Board, and the Mitchell Community Board, Mitchell Community College Board. And we said, we're not going to do anything unless we can all sing off the same sheet of music. It would be good if it was unanimous, but we'll, we'll accept harmonious, okay? And the board, and we said, we cannot go with a big, fat, huge, massive bond, it's got to be as skinny as you can make it. Iredale Statesville Schools came back with one project, Mooresville came back with one project, Mitchell came back with one project. Now, if that's political shenanigans, I plead guilty. You've got a very lean bond package that addresses the most critical needs in the county. It was all done under the bright lights. So that's what, that's what happened, that's why we did what we did, and I am, I am proud. If someone else would like to make the motion or have some comments, I'll make the motion.
Let me make one comment right there. I know a lot of car manufacturers, getting toward the end of the year, will say that timing is everything on lease programs and stuff like that. Timing is everything. We have school bond debt that will be rolling off, that it will enable this county to move forward with putting another school bond on the ballot without causing a major tax increase, using old dollars and new dollars to do that. Ms. Tane, I really, really resonated with me, because it was so real when you gave your presentation this evening, about there are people out here. I mean, you know, look around this room, we're all doing pretty good. There are families that aren't doing pretty good. So we always have to be ever-conscious of that, that we, that we understand that folks have tax burden. So our responsibility is to try to make that tax burden as light as possible and still accomplish the goal that's in front of us. Ideally, our careers are made up in three phases. You learn, you earn, and then you return. That's kind of what we do in life. But with that said, I'll sit back and, and say, we, there was a lot of people, myself included, made a lot of mistakes in the sales tax referendum. Let's don't relive it.
Folks, I didn't bring my knapsack, so I'm not going to speak long. But I'll just revisit and take you back to 2014, and Ken Robson was there. I was there, a gentleman by the name of the late David Boone, which I still consider almost conservative people in our county. And worse to me, he was honorary, okay? I can be honorary time. But anyway, Steve Johnson and Renee Griffin. And he explained to us... times. But anyway, Steve Johnson and Renee Griffin. And he explained to us why we should always do a bond versus, we were doing what we called a cop fund at that time. That means we made the decision, put X amount of dollars on the, on the ballot. You didn't have any say so. He said he had to stand in his store daily and listen to people whine and gripe because they did not have a right to vote on that bond, and we should never do that again. And that was in 2014. And again, I'm honorary at times, hard to get along with, but everything he said made sense. Again, very conservative guy. I've never served anybody else. I've been here for 18 years. No one else I've trekked with has been that conservative. So when he said that, it resonated with me. This is what we need to do. Since 2014, I still believe that. I still believe it's the right thing to do. You, as a citizen, a voter, have the right to vote one up or vote one down. So I'm just telling you, you're conscious, be your guide. I'm going to always vote to put one on the ballot. That's my, I didn't say anything else. I'm tired, okay?
Okay, despite Commissioner Robertson's valiant attempt to cut me off at the pass with the motion, I'll, I do want to say a few words. I'll try and emphasize a few. You know, our population growth is stagnant, and average household income in the county has decreased, and a number of major employers have closed down. Our tax rate has increased over the last decade by oh twenty cents because of the decline in the tax base, and the schools that we built in the 1920s through the 1960s are falling down around our ears, and we have to pass a bond to try to replace those. That's the situation that a number of counties in the state of North Carolina face today. That is exactly the opposite of the situation that we face in Iredell County. Thank the Lord. Because of the foresight of previous boards, both the Boards of Education and the county commissioners, they have sought, even when it was the tough call, to invest in our school systems, recognizing that education is joined at the hip with economic development. And that's what the economic developers tell us. And when companies look to Iredell County as a potential place to land, the school systems are one of the very top of the list, because not only is it producing a workforce that they want to employ, but it's where their employees are going to send their children. And if their employees are not happy with the choices that are available to them, then they'll go somewhere else. And right now, we are ahead of the power curve. But if you stand still, other folks are going to pass you by. You've got to keep moving forward. A lot of times, people complain about government not being proactive, being reactive. Exhibit A is transportation, you know? They don't build roads in North Carolina unless they're congested. You can't get it on the project list because there's $8 billion of transportation needs in this state and only $1 billion a year worth of funding. So it's constantly chasing this rabbit that you'll never catch. You know, we have an opportunity in Iredell County, just in time, just in the nick of time, to stay ahead of the power curve, to be able to address the needs capacity-wise. This isn't adding bells and whistles and nice-to-have stuff. This is just to put, you know, butts in seats, and to maintain the level of investment by businesses and the confidence of our citizens in the quality of life that we offer here in this county. So it is our sole responsibility among government, as Ms. McLean referred to in the North Carolina General Statutes, for local county commissions to build schools. And it's not mixed in with any other dollars. It's not federal dollars. It's not state dollars. This is purely a county function. And so, as for the reasons that have been stated, the opportunity to borrow funds at a low rate when the cost of delay is to spend more because the construction inflation is greater than the general rate of inflation, which is what drives the low bond rate. If you, there are some things that you borrow money to accomplish. In your personal lives, you don't save up for 20 years to buy a home. You get a mortgage, and you pay on it, but you've got a home to raise your children, and it produces an immediate benefit to your family. And that's what we need to do for our citizens, is produce that immediate benefit for themselves, and more importantly, their children, who are our future. So with that being said, the cost of the bond in 2014, which was roughly equivalent to the amount of this bond that is being proposed, both bonds together, for Mitchell and for the Iredell Statesville and Mooresville Graded, resulted in a four-and-a-quarter cent property tax increase. Today, we're considering for the decision by the people, as Commissioner Norman has mentioned, and Commissioner Halp, to make that decision about whether we can achieve the same effect, to borrow roughly the same amount of money for a penny on the tax rate as opposed to four-and-a-quarter cents on the tax rate. And that's a result of some bonds being paid off and rolled over, as Vice Chairman Bowles has mentioned. But it's also based on the fact that we have a much larger tax base that's been grown through businesses and people locating in Iredell County. So that dynamic, I think, is a good illustration of how, if you grow the pie, you can get bigger slices or more slices out of that pie and not pay a lot more for it. It's when you're trying to divide a pie that's shrinking or not growing, where the cost increases to the average citizen beyond, to the point where it really impacts their discretionary income. So, without further ado, effective sigh of relief, I will request that this resolution be considered by a motion that pursuant to the Local Government Bond Act as amended, the county of Iredell, North Carolina, is hereby authorized to contract a debt in addition to any and all other debt which said county may now have, may now or hereafter have power or authority to contract, and in evidence thereof, to issue school bonds in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $115,500,000 for the purpose of providing funds, together with any other available funds, for acquiring, constructing, and equipping school buildings and other school facilities in said county, including, without limitation, A, the construction of a new high school and the acquisition of related land, rights, of way, and equipment for the Iredell Statesville Schools Board of Education, and B, the construction of a new middle school and the acquisition of related land, rights of way, and equipment for the Mooresville Graded School District. Is there a motion?
Ms. General Mallory, I will like to make the motion to approve the issuance of a bond order authorized in $115,500,000 in school bonds.
Motion by Commissioner Robertson. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
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 Motion carries unanimously. I would also request that the following resolution by motion be put before the commission, that pursuant to the local board, the Local Government Bond Act as amended, the county of Iredell, North Carolina, is hereby authorized to contract a debt in addition to any and all other debt which said county may now or hereafter have power or authority to contract, and, and in evidence thereof, to issue community college bonds in an aggregate principal amount not exceeding $10,500,000 for the purpose of providing funds, together with any other available funds, for acquiring, constructing, renovating, expanding, improving, and equipping various community college facilities for Mitchell Community College. Is there a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I would move to approve the issuance of the bond ordering authorization of $10,500,000 in community college bonds.
Motion by Vice Chairman Bowles. Any further discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion carries unanimously.
Aye.
Thank you. This concludes our agenda. Is there any additional new business to come before the county commission? Any old business to come before the county commission?
Can I make one other comment?
Yes.
I just wanted to speak to the young lady at Our Schools First. Being registered Republican is not an indictable offense. Thank you.
And I think we might have a three-word county manager's report.
Nothing to report.
Okay. You pass 100%. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Ah, motion to adjourn. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
There's like sign. Motion carries unanimously.